All right, now being 8:00 o'clock, I'll call the November 6th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. We've got Chief Osari here with a 6:00 appointment to give us an update on the tropical storm. So Chief, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, good evening and thank you for having me come in. I wanted to take a minute, the town was asking to kind of give like an after-action report on what happened last Sunday. A no-name type of storm came in with slowly throughout the weekend. We got a report that it was going to build to be a little bit more than the regular windstorm, and in fact it did. We didn't call an emergency management meeting prior to that because it really didn't look like there was going to be much. So as it turned out, late in the afternoon and evening, we started to get the storm coming in. Rain, heavy winds came in. 10 or 11 o'clock, it started to pick up quite a bit. And, you know, in the afternoon, we had the guys, we saw that it might be more than that, so we made sure all our saws were screened out. I didn't bring any additional staffing in. Highway didn't, police didn't at the time. We really didn't think we needed, so... But as it went on, it turned out to be a little bit more than that. So we had the regular two firefighters on duty, and as the calls started to come in, probably about 10:30, 11:00 o'clock, they included poles down, wires down, branches down, branches on vehicles, services ripped from houses, and power losses. So we were able to sustain it with the crews we had on, and then they started to pick up further, and then we did an off-call for help, people coming in within the department. So we managed it with two engines and two command cars. And about midnight, 2:00 AM was the highest call line. At that point, quite a bit of the town was out of power, and a lot of the roads were blocking, you know, and the police assisted us. Highway was great with us, removing trees, blocking off roads, that type of thing. So from about 2:00 to 4:00, slowed down a little bit. And then at 4:00, about 4:00 AM to about 8:00 AM, it picked up in a big way. More transformer problems, lines down, more power losses, services being broken away from houses, blocked roads, that type of thing. We even had a branch, a tree on a truck that crew was working in the morning. They had to step away from the vehicle, we got it de-energized, and we were able to, you know, keep everybody safe. We didn't require any mutual aid from any other towns, we were able to manage it. Units were on scene within three to five minutes on every call, which was great, you know, early arrival. And again, the highway worked wonderfully with us, removing trees as quick as they could, stuff that was too big for us with the load of that type of thing, they were great, and their responses too. So we were on generated power from, I think, from about 2:30 AM on. And throughout the day, we were managing incidents also, smaller amounts, but, you know, it continued to the point there were 22 total that were storm-related, 22 calls. We had a major power loss continuing. EverSource crews got out once the winds died down, and in my opinion, I think they did a pretty damn good job. They weren't staffed fully for storm preparedness, you know, they had about half their crews, but they were able to get in here in a relatively short period of time and start the process of bringing power back. But for most of the day, quite a few people were still out, most of the town. So Tuesday morning, it was determined it was continuing, we opened the warming center here at Town Hall. And I think one thing people may not even know about, we try to let it, get it out there and tell them about that, that this is one of our shelters, and in a case where it's not a major thing, where people are still sheltering in place safely, that we will open this because it has generated power, and they can come here, charge their cellphones, hang out a little bit, get some updates and services as needed. Town Hall was open, so we continued on that. And that, I guess we had, we had one person came in?
We actually had two.
A couple came in.
We had some, a young lady come in to charge a phone, another woman came in and got coffee. I made a cup of coffee.
Yeah, and of course, because we're on generated power also, we provide water for people to come in, and they were coming in for quite a bit for their horses, for their houses. And we're also used to preparing, but there wasn't a lot of preparation this time because they didn't think it was going to be a big deal. But in fact, actually, it continued on. By Wednesday, we had about eight customers still without power. The school on Tuesday was one of them also. I made some special calls to EverSource, and I got that addressed, and they were ready to go for Wednesday for school. They really responded well, in my opinion. EverSource did a very good job for us. And they can easily get overwhelmed too, but I think they did a great job. So, and again, one of the post-storm observations that I wanted to make was that sometimes, as we get busy and things and resources get stressed, it's nice to go to other possible resources such as volunteers in the shelter, if we were to open a shelter, the CERT teams, which we've seen the CERT team kind of degrade in this community, we're down to pretty much the director, Dave Smith. We'd like to see some more people maybe get volunteered on that, and they could do some really good stuff as far as some shelter operations, or even things like road closures if it's safe, things like that. So I believe CERT's a very important organization, it's something we should work on. There's a woman who has moved into town, I can't think of her name right now, she was a big CERT coordinator, she's very interested in helping us, so I introduced her today, we're going to try to get some of that stuff going too.
What does CERT stand for?
Citizens Emergency Response Teams. And there's a training that goes along with it, they have some equipment that they've been given through some granting, and it's a great other resource that fire and police can use. I think it's a great resource, and it's a good way to be community-oriented and civic-minded. And when you get to a point like that, when you get calls where it becomes overwhelming and we're working the big bad stuff, those groups can be beneficial to how communities stay safe. It's very hard for me to dedicate some resources to say shelters and things when those people could do a really, really great job and be involved in something good. For the week, we had 33 calls. For some reasons, we had a lot of medicals, we had three major car accidents, actually four. Two of them took clean the power right off, we lost power again for a short period of time, people were a little frustrated with that, but we had to kill it in order for to... One person was trapped in the car, we had to get him out, so EverSource killed it for us, and so people were a little frustrated on that, but I think by Thursday, I guess everybody had their power back. So that was it. It was, caught us a little bit off guard, but fire, police, and highway, I think, did a great job, you know, and we didn't have to go outside to get any additional help. The MEMR has asked me for an initial disaster assessment because they're going to take a look and see what the statewide potential damage was. We didn't have, Oz is going to be minimal, but I will provide that to MEMR in the coming days here, and then as they go forward to see if there's any potential for disaster relief. Okay?
Perfect. Sounds great.
I got a few questions.
Absolutely.
Texting. The police have the ability to do texting, right?
That's correct.
Do you have the ability?
No, we don't. We don't have laptop in our, the ambulances do. You saw chatting?
No, texting out to residents that, you know, there's some sort of an emergency or some...
The police, they do that reverse 911 for us.
So they do it for you?
That's correct.
Okay. Because it seems to me we should make more use of that during a storm like that.
Yes, absolutely.
We don't use social media, and people were coming to me and saying, you know, "We really didn't know what was going on." And I think we need a combination of two. The social media will address through Elizabeth, but I think in the future, we should figure out how to be texting on some sort of continuous.
A regular type of basis, okay, yeah, with like updates.
The other thing was, I got a couple of things. One was, I saw her on Plimpton, Hilton Plimpton, I guess, one of the people who was disabled in town.
Yes.
He had ventilation service, but he was afraid it was going to run out.
Correct.
And do we have a policy? How do we deal with disabled people in town?
We have, we know of at least two. We made contact with that individual earlier in the week to make sure he was able to call 911 from the devices that he has.
Okay.
And we did a test with him because that was a concern, and he had a concern.
Good.
We made contact, it was just actually three days prior to the storm. So we met with him, we understand, we know of one other person in town also.
Okay.
Okay, so we try to know that it's, we usually know, and we make contact and also make a special check on them also.
Okay, good, good, that's good. The other thing, Monday, Mark and I were here, kind of staggering, you know, after the 2:00 closing to keep the place open until, then we had a selectmen's meeting. But after the selectmen's meeting, it was unclear, did we just shut down the townhouse? And do you have power generator over there?
We do, yes, we do.
Okay, because we will, I guess we need to figure out in a storm like that, if we want to keep this open as a warming center, how are we going to staff it?
Right. In the past, the fire department has pretty much handled the staffing of shelters and warming centers. And I brought it to the selectmen's attention, you know, "Do you believe the fire department should be responsible for that?" And I could make some additional steps to cover that. And also pay for it is an issue also.
Yeah.
I have been able to bring staffing in to help to do that because we've had to open the warming center on various occasions, but it can be difficult sometimes, especially for out straight. And that piece about volunteerism and CERT and things like that would be a great asset to develop for...
That's something CERT should be doing.
Yeah, absolutely. And we had, a number of years ago, we had, the Red Cross came in and did the shelter operations course. It has to be nine years now. There was a room full of people at the Dennis Elementary School. A lot of folks actually moved off, but that it was something that we had a pretty good base of people that were willing to be interested. And we have the shelter operations book complete, I've got one hard copy of it to open the shelter, so people that maybe didn't have a lot of training could sit with at least one person with training and help to open this stuff and get it out there. So, and that's the emergency management stuff that we like to work on and continue to develop as we go forward in a storm. And I've talked about some funding over the years, it's hard to store things for carts, some storm preparedness, because even though our regional shelter is at Silver Lake where they have a lot more resources, we may not be able to get there. It may be that simple, and at times I can tell you that was the case. So we're relying on the shelters in town, which is the Dennis School and the Town Hall. I'm developing another shelter at the church. They have told me that they'd be willing to let us use that in a shelter in an emergency. So I'll be doing a shelter assessment with the Red Cross there. They have backup power, a full kitchen, plenty of room for people to sleep and rest, they fixed their generator, so that'll be another additional great resource for us. The school, of course, Dennis School has really no heat in the winter, so that's limited depending on the weather. And Town Hall, we don't have a lot of good cooking facilities, so a combination of those four places, we should be well set to accept residents that can no longer, you know, manage it on their own in their own homes.
Okay, I guess we just need a follow-up sometime, maybe in a month or two when this CERT person comes on and, you know...
Right, I would love to. CERT was, they were six or seven people that were on CERT, and they were doing pretty well, and they were always available, but it's died off a little bit, and that's the type of community group stuff that really, I believe strongly in CERT, I really do. And Dave is ready and willing to go. Dave Smith is very well versed on it, very interested in helping that, so it'd be nice to get that. I'll get ahold of him.
Okay. One last thing, Woodland with the generator.
Yes.
Did you have to put a generator there this time?
No, we did not, no. They, they lost power for quite a long time too, but they, it was warm, this time it was warm all the way around, so people did their thing with their flashlights and stuff. There is no generator at the Woodlands, and as I had explained, and it was, I finally didn't figure out what happened there on the original plans. When it came to fire protection, Chief Walker at the time said, "All right, listen, I want diesel pumps for the fire protection," and those run off of a car battery, they're towed on a regular truck battery. Water was there from Kingston already, so for the fire protection standpoint, he was happy with that. Reliable, never-fail system. Sometime after that, that generator left the plans, and they never put one in. In the past, we've actually assisted them with a generator, we have, it's a military piece of equipment that I got a few, actually, I got about six or seven years ago, and I brought it down there, it'll help them, but it's for any resident. If any resident's in trouble, I will bring it to them too. I've asked the Woodlands to at least, well, we actually, we assisted them in a grant writing for a generator, they were unable to get it, and they continue to try to come up with alternative ideas. But I've asked them to have the management put what's called a transfer switch in, that in the event of a power loss again, either their social housing, or us, or whoever, if we could get a generator hooked up to at least get the heat going there. I've been unable to get them to do that.
So maybe we should write them a letter from the board. We can't make them do it, but I think it would be, hold them to at least explore this. Because if, if we have to take a generator from ours, from the fire, to bring it down there, that just puts us at risk if we need it someplace else.
That seems kind of crazy.
And I can't dedicate a truck, some of our trucks have generators, two of them do. I can't dedicate a piece of apparatus to something like that unless it was a dire emergency. That's why we got this military piece of equipment. It's not, it's only 23500 watts, it's not that big, but it helps. But again, another resident, we've, other residents have used it, and it's really on a first-and-first survey basis.
Maybe we should ask them to come in, chat with us.
Yeah, because that...
The management of Woodland.
Yeah. Most of folks with special needs, that, I would have to evacuate that whole facility.
And then we'd have to house them here.
Yeah, that's correct.
They, they need a generator. It should be self-sustaining.
Yeah, we wrote a letter to support their grants twice, I wrote a very nice letter to them, they, one was a federal one, one was through, it was EnStar at the time, I believe, that they tried to get a generator. So we've supported them in assisting them in grant writing, and even explained that we could use the place for potential other shelter warming center in town and not in the town if we needed to. We supported them in a big way to try to pull this off. That's something that is a very big concern of mine when we have bad weather.
All right.
So my, back to the others, and I think we hit on all this, but I think my concern is just CRISPR communication, particularly CRISPR communication on, especially if we have two or three warming centers, which one's open, what time of day it's open, and I think that comes in the texting. Kind of feels to me, every time the emergency management team meets and makes a decision, that a text should go out saying that we met and what decisions were made.
We have at times in the past, this one, and in all fairness, really didn't show that it was going to be a big deal, so I didn't get a meeting started, but we kind of go over those things, and you're correct, those are the types of things we have to talk about each time. What is additional resources are you bringing in, highway, police, fire, what additional issues may we have, you know, flooding, whatever it may be. So you're right, that's an integral part of preparing for storms.
And, you know, of course, it didn't matter on this storm, but the fact that we had a warming station, but then we opened, we closed at 9:00 PM, and I think we want to warn people of that. I mean, interestingly enough, this warming station gets used mainly for people to charge their device. It's the big thing, get a cup of coffee more than anything else, but...
And if you remember, mine was a few years ago, we actually did open this as a shelter. We had one resident came in with their...
With their three cats.
And we set up the other old selectmen program, and it worked out very well. And we did staff it at that time, and I will staff it somehow, and there also has to be a police component there also, really. This is a public building, we need to protect a public building.
Okay, good, good.
Some of the stuff that is important.
Perfect.
So shall we invite Woodland in?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe we can work together, I can reach out to Old Colony Planning Council, they've got a, an aging division, and see if there's any grant money available for this type of venture.
Good idea. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, additional phone line installation, Town Administrator Office. Anything happening on this one, Bree?
Hi, sorry about that. I was trying to...
I think maybe, did we miss something? This may be my fault, though, in all that pile of paper, there might have been something that we were supposed to sign last week.
Does it?
Just shows how much we need you, Bree, that we missed that one.
This is just to get a phone that's separate from yours?
Yes, anything, because it's going to become a bill.
Because all Dale's calls were going through Bree, which was crazy.
It's crazy.
Okay.
So I need to sign...
What is it, an authorization form or something?
I can say, I'm not allowed to sign those. I would have, yeah, so it's the, it's $107. Okay, get the phone. I don't know what name it was, but if you can sign.
You can still pick up, Bree, if it rings and...
No.
She's not there?
No.
Then what? I guess I didn't make myself clear.
I wouldn't be, I'm, I'd have two phones come, I mean, my line, my line rings in my office, like they all do. I can see her line light up.
Yeah, okay.
But she'd have her own voicemail and her own, she's going to maintain...
I mean, you knew she was out, and she asked you to, you'd be able to see it.
I'd have to be looking at that phone, it's not going to ring on my end.
Okay, so we still want to go ahead with this?
Yeah, you need a motion?
All right. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we sign a Verizon service order form to create a separate line for the Town Administrator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I just sign by here, Bree?
Yes, it's just an authorized signature, and then they put me as the contact. I give all those things to Barbara.
Okay. And today's 11:06:17. How quickly can they do this?
So I'm just going to be scanning that back into them.
Okay, perfect. All right, Fire and EMS consultant, Emma Wright, pardon me? Oh yeah, that's your cover sheet, sorry, Bree.
Most of the interviews are completed, there's two more phone interviews to be done, I think tomorrow, and that will complete it. I chatted with Bob Lumer, said the afternoon, and what happens next is, they will give us, they'll do a one-on-one with each of us. So they'll call you, and then they'll call Mark, and then they'll call me. Just to give a sense of, you know, what came out. Then it goes internal, where it goes into their drafting group, that puts it together, make sure that it's passed by their legal to make sure. So we shouldn't expect it for about 90 days. And that'll be a draft.
Okay, so a draft in 90 days.
Right. So the draft, if there's anything that we, in other, we can't take things out of the draft. We can't say, "Okay, gee, we don't like that comment, it stays in." That's by law, okay? But we'll at least get a chance to look at it, and if there's anything like grammar or anything that, you know, we can push back on that. And then I assume we'd have a sit-down with ourselves, and the chief, and the consultants, and have them walk us through it.
Okay.
Very good.
Sounds good. All right, Plimpton's gravel permit application. Mark, you put something together for us?
I did.
Based on Halifax at Middleborough, and I think we all thought that it looked good, but we didn't want to do anything without you, Bree.
So what I did on that is took the pieces that made sense from the other two towns, we're limited by the fact they have a bylaw that they could work off, we don't, and I basically grabbed the information that seemed like it would be nice for us to know when we consider this. And I actually looked it over again tonight, and it looked okay to me. I didn't know if you had anything, Bree, you wanted to add. And then the only other question was whether we felt like we needed to run this by Town Council. I don't think we're asking for anything that is a problem, and maybe just waiting until we do an official bylaw to get it by Town Council, and I think this is a reasonable document to work from.
It, I liked that it gave a little bit more, it's asking a little more information than what we had.
I mean, it's nothing that any applicant's going to have to spend a huge amount of time searching out, and it should be pretty easy to put together, and just gives us more information upon which to base our decision.
And also to write the gravel permit. Because each gravel permit that the Board of Selectmen writes, and I know Bob is helping with that to write them now, it's for that individual, and I think this would help more to write it out, and how long, I mean, do they need to have a... I didn't know, one of the questions should be, do they have to have the bond, or, you know, Mr. Randall has that, the bank statement we hold up.
I didn't see that on the other two applications.
Is that per individual? Or is, I don't know if that...
I think that was individual.
Okay.
I don't think that's a generalization, but we could look at another permit to see.
Okay. But I know I liked it a little bit more, like I said, someone came to look at it and said, "Don't you want?" And I didn't, I said, "Well, when they go to write it, they're going to ask you."
Right.
So I thought, I did like this.
So maybe you can, if the board approves this, you take the draft off there, put the revised date in it, and you have a new earth removal permit application.
I like it, thank you.
Ask, and poof, there it is.
All right, so do we need a motion, or?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that, Bree, modify the document that Mark has created for our earth removal permit application, and you're going to get that online and have hard copies available too?
We don't have our forms online, did you want this?
You don't have forms online?
Not a lot, not many, but I can get this.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we put it online? Yeah. Okay.
Feel free to change the formatting if you want, leave a little more space in there.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, Housing Production Plan Survey Deadline, that was on Halloween. I emailed you guys with what the responses were. I think we had two more responses after the responses I sent. You, it was very interesting reading, the majority of people that responded were, I believe, mid-40s to mid-50s. Joy Marbles had not gotten her survey out to the seniors, unfortunately, but it kind of, it works out anyway, she's going to send it out, so we'll have all of theirs, and we'll be able to see what the senior need is, and it won't be skewed by the rest of the town, so it ends up working out well.
Good.
Yeah, so we are meeting on the 15th to finalize our draft, and we did have a resident from Main Street who attended the meeting, and she was very concerned that we were calling out properties and had design plans and all of that, and she didn't understand that this is just conceptual and ideas, and there's really nothing concrete here, it's just a very general plan on suggestions of things for the town to consider to meet our housing needs. So the important piece that will come is the next piece, and that will be a comprehensive permit policy, and that's going to be a pretty important part after this first phase is done. So I think she felt better after that, and I told the committee if they wanted to send her a copy as well of the draft plan, you know, she could comment on it. I think in the past, she had been involved with conservation. Her first name was Pat, I'm not sure if her last name was, I don't know, on Main Street. So we'll have that done on the 15th, and then we'll get it to you and the planning board, and hopefully we can get this squared away by the end of the year.
Did you see the email that she sent?
Who, Pat?
Not that Joy.
Yes, yes.
I gave each of you one.
Yeah, oh, thank you very much, the handbook, yeah. You know, I could do that right now, you guys asked me to follow up on the Citizens for Aging, which is actually two down, and Joy provided a handbook on the program, and this is for 20 hours a week, the people will be making $11 an hour. They, there's no sick time, no vacation time, it's a job training program, not a job. They're going to be assisting her with Meals on Wheels and receptionist, and basically whatever the person is capable of doing, I think the job will be tweaked as they go. So it sounded very good, she was really excited about it. It's a four-year grant program, so she'll be able to have somebody for quite a bit of time on this.
So this is the part I still don't quite get. This is a training program, the grant is to, for a certain number of hours for people to be trained, but then after they're trained...
I think the, they're actually going to be, the receptionists are in helping with Meals on Wheels after they're trained, so they're going to be helping with town programs after they're trained, even though they say it's not a job, it really is.
And the grant is still going to pay for that?
The grant will pay for that for four years.
Very good.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so that's...
She mentioned something about, she spoke to the fire chief, she was asking about keeping the food warm here, but it can be done because the fire station has that equipment, stove, and things like that, that the food...
Oh yeah, they've got a kitchen, yeah, okay.
So at the end of four years, in...
They'll be done.
They'll be done, okay.
They'll be done.
As long as...
Yeah, they've got no, there'll be no benefits, no nothing, it's just 20 hours a week for the set rate, and it's, I don't know how she's going to screen people, but I believe it's based on need, over 55 and make $15,000 or less.
There must be a cap on the dollars of grant money in total, so that would dictate how many people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think she's just looking at one person. Yeah, and I think she's just looking at one person, so maybe it is like a forty-five thousand, or a, you know, forty to thousand dollar grant, and she's figuring it would be one person for four years.
Okay, as long as she's in control of it, yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else on that one, Bree?
No, it was just the.
Yeah, she had a nice little handbook, yeah.
You had wanted her to come in or no?
No, nope. Okay.
Is that COA, Citizens for Citizens, is that the same thing?
Yes, that's that. Old Townhouse renovation, responsibility of the town versus Plimpton Historical Society.
My rat.
She's easy stuff we're doing.
So Jessica Kinsman, who's president of the Historical Society, myself, had put together a proposal to put in front of CPC, Community Preservation Committee. But then after I thought about it, and I reread the lease, it dawned on me, we should be putting the proposal forward.
The town.
The town, in his way. Now, I'm not sure why the lease was written this way, the lease says that the Historical Society is responsible for the maintenance, except for snow, and I forget what the other piece is, but basically, snow removal, keeping the place so you can get into it. So the proposal we put forth says that there's a five-year plan to do, replace clapboards where needed, paint it, hopefully put in a well, because we've been having pump problems, replace the windows, which are nineteen-fifties windows, they're not in any way in the character of the building itself, and they leak. So I was thinking about it, if the Plimpton Historical Society is responsible for that kind of maintenance, I asked Jessica, how many members, you know, do we have? We have a hundred members, she says, roughly, and it brings in about twelve hundred dollars in fees, or, you know, when they sign up each year dues, I should say. Twelve hundred dollars isn't going to do squat. Plus, the Plimpton Historical Society doesn't own the building. Now, there is one piece of it that maybe got into it, the fact that Plimpton Historical Society was given thirty thousand dollars by Mrs. Dennett in her will, but if she wanted that to go to the building, she would've given it to the town, 'cause the town owns the building. So I think a couple of things should follow out of this, I think we need to revisit the lease to say that the Historical Society is responsible for the custodial maintenance, making sure it's clean, you know, those things that take place in a normal building. But that maintenance shouldn't mean that you're responsible for painting the building, or doing a new roof, or these type things, these have to be the responsibility of the town and us as the Board of Selectmen, representing the town. So, I guess I would like to take back the CPC request and resubmit it as part of the town. Now, I don't know, you know, hopefully we can go out for grants, hopefully we can go to the CPC and say, what parts of this are reasonable under your charter? But I don't think we should continue to look to the Plimpton Historical Society, which doesn't have even a board right now, it's just not gonna happen.
We included the repair of that building in our CIP plan.
Oh, did we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We did.
Do?
I think it might be year four or five, we didn't do it immediately, but we had estimates, John Willhamsen was working with us, and we included that, so we planned on paying for those big-ticket repairs.
So, the building is shabby right now, I mean, exterior, inside looks actually pretty good, but, you know, it just needs a good paint job. Should we move that up in our thinking? Because when I talked to John Willhamsen, he said you don't have to do the windows at the time that you do the clapboard, you put the casing and then you can just do it later. But I understand from, probably from the CPC's view, that, hey, if you're gonna do the clapboard painting, you probably want to do the windows at the same time. I don't know who's right, I'm not a cop, and.
So, so a bunch of issues, I guess, you know, more or less put on my CPC cap now.
Yeah, please.
You know, we've done, I think there are two issues related to the Historical Society, and I don't think anyone has assumed that the Historical Society is responsible for raising the funds as such to do this, these renovations. I mean, the way it's worked in the past, I think we've done, we, the Community Preservation Committee, has done two projects with PHS, and one was the chairlift, and the other one, I don't remember what it was, it was probably a decades ago, we put in insulation, I think, under the floor, and maybe on the ceiling, something else. But I don't think it was ever the case that it was thought that PHS was gonna raise the money within itself to do this stuff, though they could certainly apply for grants, and in essence, they applied to grants through CPC. And what CPC needs, I mean, there are certain criteria that have to be fulfilled to use CPA money on certain projects, but then what we need is a project manager, someone applying. And actually, I mean, off the top of my head, it seems totally reasonable to me that it would be the PHS that might be the project manager, if we granted money, or if it went through Townhouse.
I don't see it at all.
I mean, we've done that in the past, and it worked out great. When Chris was here, Chris worked with myself and the committee, and we got those projects done, we got those projects done.
Yeah, it may have worked because Chris was there, but I think we're in a different venue right now, and it shouldn't be the responsibility of the Plimpton Historical Society to manage doing the painting, the clapboard, the windows.
And I think it doesn't have to, and it could be another entity, but from the perspective of CPC, we're gonna need someone to be a project manager.
And I think the town should work with you to do that.
And the town being the Board of Selectmen?
I think we're the keeper of the buildings. I mean.
Yeah, I think it's another way to do it.
If you think about, the Plimpton Historical Society, as I understand it, the lease was put together because people wanted the building to be used, that's why it was a dollar a year. They could as easily do what the Plimpton Garden Club did and go up to the church. That, so, it doesn't make sense for them to be the.
The projects in the past, when my wife was president, she got the, of the Historical Society, she got the prison people in to paint it.
And maybe that's what we want to do.
It's a beautiful project, but, you know, it ran through the president, and it may be that the way PHS is set up right now, there just isn't the manpower and the women power. And frankly, I think that was a real concern with CPC, in looking at the application, and whether PHS had the human resources to do it.
I don't think, I don't think they do, and I, I still think it's, it falls back on us as keeper of the buildings.
I mean, I think it's another way to do it, I wouldn't exclude, I would hope we wouldn't exclude in the future, if there were really energetic leadership in PHS, that they might want to do more projects, and it's great if they do.
If they want to step up and say, yes, we'll take it on.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that's the way it's always been, and that's the way it really is now.
But, I don't think the lease makes that clear, because the lease says, they're responsible for everything except the snow removal.
All right, well then that, I mean, that probably needs.
That needs to be revisited.
Yeah, that's another issue, and I mean, they shouldn't feel responsible, and the town surely should feel responsible for delayed maintenance. And maybe that comes down to, I mean, we touched on this last week, or the week before, whether the delayed maintenance is taken care of with CPC funds when it can, or general town funds, I mean, we need to include that in the budget, in our buildings and grounds budget next year. And I think that may be a possibility, particularly if we get into problems, which I think we are gonna get into, as, in terms of what part of that, the projects that have been put forth are historical preservation, and what parts are just maintenance, that it may be that we have to increase our buildings and grounds budget to cover stuff in the next town meeting.
Yeah, I thought we budgeted like fifty thousand dollars, or we thought, our cap was fifty thousand dollars to take care of the numerous issues, the painting, the windows, I'm not sure if there was something else, I think there were other things as well, the front door. And I'll take a look at the CIP plans, I know it's in there.
Yeah, I'll take a look too, I don't think I have it with.
Yeah, I don't have, I thought I had it online, but I don't.
The door, I'd like to go forward with, because we just need to get it done.
The building needs to be secure.
It's about, what John Willhamsen, I'll send you on the memo he wrote. There is a piece that goes on the front door that, you know, I thought it was inside, but it's on the front door, but it's blackmatted, it looks antique, the suggestion was, leave the hardware, but don't have it so it works, and then put this new piece in, which has a deadlock. The nice part about it is you can change it from a smartphone, so you could, you know, change it anytime you want. Then on the back, you know how they have these real estate boxes when you come up to a house?
Right, yeah.
You have to have the combination, that gets you the key, we should do that for the back, because we know where the key is now, and it's, it drops down in the snow, and it's a mess. So that is like, less than five hundred dollars, maybe it might come in at three hundred.
I would presume we surely have that in our buildings and grounds, so I'd be glad to make a motion that we go.
If you made it, I'd be glad to second it.
All right.
All right, let's do it.
I just, I, one more issue, it was sort of on multiple tracks, and CPC meets, I think in two weeks, to continue consideration of the application. We do have a couple of avenues, CPC, we're exploring possible consultants to kind of look at the whole building, kind of get the overview of what's needed, and give us a hand that we do it in order, we don't want to be painting first if we're gonna do the windows later, and all that, and kind of get an overview of the whole thing. And there was discussion at the last CPC meeting, that maybe the application for funds for this year, if we had to hire a consultant that we had to pay, maybe the application this year should be for a consultant, to give us the overview of a master plan.
My fear with that is it pushes it off another year.
Absolutely, I think we, CPC, are gonna need some direction, though, on what's maintenance and what's preservation, and that we have to keep exploring, so I guess we just have to keep working.
I think you're right, there, you have to know where the line is. So, I'll make a motion then, that we put the locks on the front and rear door.
Well, we're gonna be replacing the door, right, we're replacing the front door.
I believe we're gonna do the door open.
Okay.
Because it's.
Because I believe there's gaps in the door, so they're gonna repair the existing door.
All right, let's hold it off for a week, and let me find out.
Okay, I thought we were gonna replace the door.
Okay, you may be right.
Okay, so let's hold it and find out.
We'll put it back on for next.
We'll put it on the agenda next week. And we skipped right over town administrator contract.
Yeah, I did.
So, after to announce that we have successfully negotiated a contract with Elizabeth Dennett, who serves as our town administrator, her first day will be November twenty-seventh, right after Thanksgiving, and we just need to sign the contract.
I make a motion that we sign a contract.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Can I say yahoo?
You can, you can absolutely say yahoo. Okay, so that's everything under updates and discussions, now we'll jump to correspondence.
First is the Dennett Annual Thanksgiving Feast, Wednesday, next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday, John's going, I'll go.
Unfortunately, I can't.
We'll have a feast. This is a follow-up on the latest Animal Control Officer Incident Report, and I think the follow-up is the report from the Department of Health that the, was it a woodchuck? Yeah, that the woodchuck's rabies test was negative, that is, no rabies. This is from the State House about lowering the flag to half-mast, which has been done honoring or respecting the victims of another senseless act of violence, and that continues through Thursday. From the Town Tree Warden, he will be unavailable from November fourth through November twelfth, which is next Sunday, and he lists the Barnes Tree Service as the fill-in service if there's emergencies. Mass Cultural Council, this is the grant for forty-four hundred dollars that we talked about last week, and we needed a signature, and there it is.
Okay, thank you.
From Lynch, Malloy, and Marini, are certified public accountants and advisors, and this is the contract for their annual audit, and that's gonna need, I guess, a vote and a signature of the chair.
How long have we been using these guys? It's been a while, hasn't it?
It's been as long as I've been a selectman.
Signed a law again through 2019.
Okay, and then we'll go out to bed after that?
Then we'll go out to bed.
Okay, all right.
So I make a motion we sign this contract.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oak Colony Joint Transportation Committee, I guess, this is, it's the agenda for the November second meeting, which has already happened. All right, this is from a fella named Mike Dionne, he is a representative from Ragnar Events, I am just seeing this afternoon, I skimmed it over, they are having a running relay event in May, it goes from Nantasket to Provincetown, they wanted to come through part of town, and he's inquiring about the permit process. So we've had a couple of other biking events and running events, do we have a permit for such an event?
There's not a permit for it, but we use it as town, use of town property.
Might not be a bad idea, just so everybody knows about it, and.
So it's signed off by the chief.
Right, and highway, or.
It's so everybody knows.
In the past, there has been, whatever, an event sheet where everyone did sign off.
Strawberry race every year, and there must be something.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's the same form, it's the use of town properties, it's where everyone's gonna attach.
This, this one may be a little more intensive than the others we've done, it's gonna be on the Friday, May eleventh, approximately noon through ten PM, there are about five hundred people that'll be coming through in relays, they're only using about three miles of town land. We haven't been overwhelmed, there was quite a bit of discussion, maybe three years ago, about when there were a couple more that came through as potential. I don't think we have anything else that we know of, May eleventh, but something we may just want to keep an eye on when the actual permit application comes through. They did include a Google Earth picture of the route, honestly, I can't figure it out from the photocopy, but, so we'll have to get more information, but Bree, you'll get then that permit then? Very good.
Who did it last year? Somebody did something like this last year.
There's a whole bunch of races that come through, there's three. Like the Cape Way one.
Well, this was like a relay race.
And then there's the one that's for, that goes all the way down, down the Cape, the end.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it was.
And there's the Strawberry Shortcake one.
Yeah, this one was, they were on Bick Street and Spring Street.
They'll tell you what route they're taking.
Okay.
Actually, it was a cute piece to this, they did mention that the community impact and the benefit would be participants spending money on food, lodging, and other services.
That's a cute idea. We should set up a lemonade stand, get a food truck.
Warrants that were signed this week.
We just write fine.
Yeah, there you go.
Context, the Public Safety, fifty-seven thousand dollars, Verizon, a hundred and ninety, Collins Center, ten thousand, that's the last, the final payment.
The last payment for the grant.
K and P, thirty-six hundred, and Columbia Gas, a hundred and fifty. Plimpton Halifax Express, some. K&amp;P, $3,600, and Columbia Gas, $150. Plimpton Halifax Express, some, an article on the storm and the usual goings-on of the Board of Selectmen. Sunrise tomorrow at 6:25. The publisher had a little blurb about powder outage, power outages, and the difference between Plimpton and other towns. Nice centerfold on the library trick-or-treat, and a lot of happy faces. And the cover girl on the first page is this little young lady.
Little strawberry?
Yeah.
So cute.
Which, I don't know if that'll show up or not, but quite cute. And with satisfaction, I report that that completes our assignments.
Okay, dates to remember, we're meeting all of this month, Mondays, right? And then Town House will be closed on 11/9, which is a Friday. Is it Thursday? Is it Thursday? It's this Thursday. So it'll be closed this Thursday in observance of Veterans Day.
Ooh, so our-
So we'll have to post Wednesday.
Yes.
We have to post, get our meeting posted Wednesday.
Wow.
And then Town House will be closed Thursday, 11/23, in celebration of Thanksgiving. Board's goals for coming year, financial management, anything new?
Yep.
All right. Public safety.
Meeting this Wednesday. Unfortunately, I can't attend. I have another meeting. I'll listen to the recording.
All right. Grants?
This is the efficiency and regionalization grant.
Oh, yeah. Can I take it? You can take it.
You can take it.
Awesome. Okay.
We don't need to discuss it right now.
All right. Volunteerism?
Nothing this week.
Okay. Technology?
Yeah. AKUS is, they have the order in of the pieces to install, okay? They would like to do a walkthrough Monday, November 13. And they would also like their master electrician to come in and do a walkthrough. So I told them that I've checked, Monday the 13th, we'll just have them come in.
Okay.
And I'll see them, because I want to talk to them, making sure that board's perfectly flat, so it doesn't have waves in it.
So is the walkthrough a training or just a walk-through?
No, no, for them to see where the installation is going to go, to think about how they're going to do the electrical part of it.
Okay.
Okay.
So you don't need me for that, or do you want me?
Not unless you want to come. It's up to you now. I'm probably going to try to ask Steve Pello, our Silver Lake technology guy, to come. But even if he doesn't come, it's for them to look at.
Okay.
What about our electrical?
What?
Yes.
I'll ask him.
Just to make sure.
Sure.
Yeah, that everything's squared away. I have no idea what the electricity in this building is.
I did want to let you know, I don't know if this is under technology or not, but that I requested from Michael Rodriguez two emails, one for the town administrator and one for-
Yeah. The town administrator's email, I'm not sure if she can use it before she's actually physically on board.
Huh.
You know, I mean, it's-
I was going to have it set up.
If she's not an employee of the town, but sure, we'll have it set up.
Yeah.
And I've sent a note to Michael, asking him to come in, because there's a series of small stuff like that.
Yeah, it really, it seemed like it would, she would at least need to get in here and fill out all of her paperwork and all of that.
We'll set it up.
Yeah, so I sent him an email, to create two emails, one for the gentleman that's new in the fire station.
Oh, John?
Yes. And one for the new town administrator.
Yeah, makes sense.
Terrific. So then we'll get rid of the town coordinator email, or will that be forwarded to her?
We should have that, we'll have Michael fix it, so it comes over.
Okay.
Okay.
That could start to filter out, I don't know.
I've been going in there every other day and eliminating, nothing's going to happen.
Lot of stuff, okay. All right, social media? I think we're going to hold this until Elizabeth gets on board and talk about that with her. Okay, lots of minutes. Thank you, Bree.
I have before the minutes. I have one little thing I want to get done. The library was approached by a nonprofit organization to put a box of candy in, and, you know, they, people buy it for a small amount, and it goes donated to whatever that nonprofit is. And Debbie Batson, the librarian, felt uncomfortable doing this. Now, we have a town policy. Basically, we say, hey, we may support you personally, but we can't pick and choose. And my personal belief is we should do the same thing with people who want to put things in place, unless it's a town-sponsored, you know, like when they sold the hats that say Plimpton.
Right.
But these outside nonprofits, I'm sure it's for a good cause, but it puts us in just a strange place. So I'd like to make a motion that we include in our policy, which I believe we already have, that, how would you describe it? These things that are physically put in place, unless they're from residents, that we not, we just can't allow that?
Do we have no soliciting? Is that kind of like a soliciting? Do they consider that?
Well, it's, did we put a policy, we talked about it, that we didn't want to pick and choose among the nonprofits, was when the, I think the women's, battered women's might have come forward, and we talked about it, and, you know, something that we support personally. But if we support them, put it on the website, how do we then turn around and say, somebody else you can't?
Somebody else, John, did it with the car. Remember, they wanted car donations?
Yeah, that sounds vaguely familiar, yeah.
And we've written back that we, that we don't do that. They kind of write to you that way also, and ask you, then, we're not sure if we can, if your town allows it.
If we want to take a little more time to think this through, I'd like to send a note to Debbie, saying that we're addressing that, and in the interim, we would prefer that you not move forward, because she does multiple forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, it is our policy to be supportive, but not necessarily able to actually put those things in. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I don't know how strict a policy we need, but-
Write something, Bree, or if you want, and I'll take a look at it and figure it out together.
Also, candy may not be the exact right thing, also, with kids and all that. Uh-huh.
I don't like it in my-
Okay. Hello.
Welcome.
All right, so you guys just want to get the minutes done, and then we'll be done? Or do you want to meet first and then do the minutes after?
I think-
I'll postpone the minutes. I'd like to get onto this at 7:00.
All right, okay.
So we'll go out of, so we'll go out and we'll come back?
Come back. We'll go, yeah.
Do we want to keep the cable?
Oh, you know, but then the filming won't, all we have left is minutes, so maybe he'll want, he can close out.
Okay. Yeah, we're, in essence, done. So if you want to just shut it down, we're just going to do minutes, and then we're done for the night.
Did you want to do minutes right now, and we're done?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so do we need a motion to go into-
All right, so I'll make a motion that we enter executive session.